Come on in.
One of the segment.
Perfect time, that perfect time, we're just on that part.
Off right now, Mark Olak and Regina Wilson, Share Medical Center.
Yes, so I'm Regina Wilson and I'm the CNO at Share Medical Center. And we just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of share with you guys about what emergency room services we provide for the community out of the county and things like that, so that you're informed of what we do, since we do receive some of your patients and stuff like that over there. So I'll let Mark give you a short little synopsis here.
Yeah, I mean, the services that we provide for emergency room, I think especially for a small hospital are pretty outstanding. You know, I know that for some places we have kind of a bad rap, but we've got all new providers since 2020, we've had all, we've got all new providers. For like orthopedic surgery, we have Dr. Tupper now, who people just absolutely love him. He comes from the city once a week and to see patients for orthopedics, do some surgery down there. Also does surgery, if it's a more major surgery, does it in the city, but then they can follow up here at Share and Alva, so just much closer than having to drive to Enid or anything like that. One of the things that I'm kind of passionate about is strokes. One thing that I really like about our hospital is, you know, the treatment for a stroke initially is the same, it doesn't matter if you go to Alva, Enid, the Mayo Clinic, they're going to give you this clot busting medication, and it can only be given in a very short time window. And so, being as we're the closest, the chance of you falling in that window is closest if you go to Share. So the services you provide, if you go to Enid, like I said, the Mayo Clinic, anywhere, it's going to be the same for that medicine. I think that's one of the reasons these little hospitals are so important, is just because of that time sensitivity. Same thing, now we don't have like interventional cardiology or anything like that where they go and do stents, but there is a clot busting medication that can be given for people that are having heart attacks, that kind of thing. You know, if somebody is needing like CPR, that care is going to be the same, Share, Enid, anywhere, that's the same basic level of care. You know, we have a new CT scan, it's only what, three years old? We just got a new mammography machine.
It is a 3D mammography, which is the standard of care now, and so that's, you know, really nice as well. And I will also interject on the strokes. Most of them, whether you're at Enid or either one of the hospitals in Enid, if you do not have a neurosurgeon, you know, on staff, they're typically giving that clot buster and sending them on to Oklahoma City in case there would be a need and need for any type of release of intracranial pressure from a bleed or anything like that. So again, going to the closest facility gives you the more likelihood of having some positive outcomes and things like that. So, and then on the cardiac end of it, we do have the cardiovascular health group out of Oklahoma City that provides our STEMI here, or your elevated STE, MI, that are the danger, really dangerous ones. And so they're on call for us and we can give that TAN case and, you know, send you wherever, you know, we need to go. So, you know, that's very-
And then your follow-up in Alva too.
Right, follow-up in Alva. Dr. Garner are here with Dr. Schrader, because it's his group.
Yeah, Schrader.
Schrader's group that does our STEMI call for us. So having the two providers, you know, close by and getting established with them and sending there is also beneficial.
Yeah. But yeah, I just, you know, the emergency room services, you know, were small enough that, you know, we call and follow up with our patients and that kind of thing in New York. That's just the other day, we had somebody that came in for chest pain, and we called Garner, and he said, "Yeah, I'm going to see her in my office." And, you know, we were able to call and make sure she didn't get that follow-up appointment, which is, you know, just something that can fall through the cracks of bigger facilities, so.
And I think the other thing that I, we're real excited about, of course, we have Survival Flight that, you know, has a helicopter, a helipad right there at our hospital. We also have Airiback that comes in, and people really didn't know how it would work if they had the Airiback insurance and, you know, and Survival Flight was there. They hop off of that pad and Airiback flies in. The beauty of having both of those insurances is the fact that there's been many times before Survival Flight came, that Airiback couldn't come, because they sort of see in our area, or they couldn't come here because they couldn't fly through the weather line. And so if you have somebody here and you can fly, you know, towards Wesley or whatever, that's very beneficial as well. And then the other thing that I think is important as well is the committees that Mark is on with the state.
Yeah, so that's, I know that, we had talked to Roger, and one thing he had mentioned, the trauma board that reviews all the traumas, I'm on the quality committee, so we review any of the traumas that fall out of the window. And so, you know, we're looking at all those, just any way that we can improve and any of that kind of stuff. Actually, we have a new director, Dr. Kellum, has he been there?
Two years.
Two years, and he's, I mean, he's real committed to anything that we can do to improve our services, so.
He's an emergency board, Survival Emergency.
Yeah, so, I mean, any of the feedback you guys can give us, we just, we're happy to take it, we just, you know, you know, I think, plus, you know, just your ambulance being in service less times since we're, you know, because by the time that you go to Enid, drive back, you know, they're out of service for three hours, you know, it's a little closer to Alva by the time you get to Enid now, so that's just something about too.
But we just wanted you to know what services we offer, and that's one thing Roger, we had talked with him, just, you know, looking at servicing the communities better, and he felt like the more we could get out what we do offer in the emergency room would benefit, you know, everyone, because some of the things that we've had with changes and stuff like that, a lot of people aren't aware, but because there's not really a way to advertise that, so.
One of the most positive things, I think, is our orthopedic guy that's coming. That's like, even if you like break something on Saturday, generally, even if you go somewhere that has orthopedics on call, they're not going to do anything that day unless it's like a broken hand or something like that, but, you know, like an ankle or something like that. The nice thing is, he's there every Wednesday, so then you can follow up with him, and if it is something that you need to go have a major surgery for, you can see him down in the city where he goes and can follow up. He gives everybody his personal cell phone number, I mean, people really like him.
It's pretty amazing, and he has done a fellowship in pediatric orthopedics as well, so he's really great with kids. He has a college athlete, has a daughter, and so he's real committed to sports medicine as well, so.
Yeah.
If, we can do anything if you guys let us know any more information that, you know, you ever want.
We're happy to talk or anything.
And we appreciate your hand in service.
And if there's any concerns about anything that happened in New York, reach out to us. We take that stuff very seriously, want to improve, so.
Do you guys want them to stop down, talk to Rick with the inmates and that stuff, just to let them know, down there also?
I would, just because, you know, he kind of makes that call, you know, with our inmates and stuff, and, yeah, just let them know that, you know, what services are down there. I don't know if he's down there still, I know he was down there earlier.
Is he in there or if he is or not?
Yeah, his truck's down there, so if you'll go, like you're going to go out that north door, his office is right there, stop in there though and tell him about, you know, for the inmates and that stuff, because like I said, he kind of makes those calls for them and stuff.
Do you have any questions for us? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Here's very much transfer ring, I didn't watch it this morning, I wish you'd move.
No?
Wait, and it's so dry. Way up, I have that little pretty seven acre patch of wheat, and we tried to pull the cows off of it three or four days, and then let them back on it, and then let them back on it yesterday, and of course the neighbor's bull was there, and our bull was there, and they dug up a volume match, and it just looked like there was like a dust storm down there, you couldn't see anything, it was all the dust, like, oh my gosh.
The weatherman, he can't predict rain, he can't sure predict wind.
The wind, yes.
Small of that.
Got glasses for the eclipse today?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no, I had to order some too, so, yeah, we got them. Something you're willing to come over, it'd be a whole lot safer than any glasses you have. So the cloud's supposed to like come in this afternoon, or is it?
About the time it's supposed to.
About the time it's supposed to happen?
If you're over there, if you're over east.
I haven't watched the news, as there's many people that it was expected to. They were saying that there was no openings anywhere, I mean, hotels or cabins or anything. Somebody, I remember, it was out of that go, they were going down there, and my brother was telling me, and normally it's like $400 a person, and there's like six people that can stay in this cabin that they rent every year, and this time it was $7,000 a person to rent that, I was like, oh my goodness.
That's stupid.
That's a whole lot of markup. You know, if it was just $7,000 total, that would be a lot of markup, but $7,000 a person, goodness.
Don't drive nowhere, it's going to blow.
Yeah, that's what they say, yeah, that's what they say, is it?
Thank you all, the crash increased 31%.
Thirty-one percent.
Good luck with all that.
Yeah, they were saying, don't drive with your, you know, the glasses on, you can see they come, don't drive with those, those are some of the people. I told her when it was, and of course, if it's not a five noon, it's a discussion, they don't print that out and give it to us, so she's supposed to be looking and I'm going to head back home.
This says Cherokee, you can start looking at the eclipse at 12:28 this afternoon.
12:28.
And you'll be able to see it for two hours and 34 minutes.
12:28.
Four hours, well, hello?
Two hours.
Yeah.
That was always supposed to last like four minutes.
Because that's the total. Yeah, the total eclipse is supposed to last four minutes, but we're not in the half totality.
We're about 88%.
Michael's grandpa's house is right, and so. Michael, you didn't invite us down there just so we could say for free? Come on, we could have moved the meeting.
$70,000.
That was fast and pretty good. We got to go now, you know, it's a four hour drive down there. You know, it's, it's a long road to four. Depends on how you drive. Um, it's a little town called Alva, it's north of Minneapolis, so.
What are your purchase orders?
We have blankets from Sheriff District Two, District One, Health and Rescue, Emergency Management, EMS, and Miss Katana West. Supposed to be followed up. The light underneath the sign.
But it'll get dark.
What'd you say the town was called? Alva, 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 like me?
Nope.
That's funny. It's a wood dummy. That's funny.
Correct interference. What the officer reports, and a court clerk record manager.
We have treasurer's resale and the treasurer's cash balance summary, we have court clerk, the court clerk preservation, and the election board.
There's your sound from this one somewhere?
Yeah.
One favor. Correction change for District One, road crossing Capitol Alley. Just time down here too, three times?
Yeah, yeah.
Michael Marshall looks up the transfer. One favor. Request from the requisition offer, Officer District One, Nate Rivera.
I'm going to abstain from this one. I actually kind of worried that you're crossing the lines of segregation duties. I have, it's the same office is requesting inputting on the POs. If I was the auditor, that seems like a red flag.
They're not requesting an inputting, so Rivera doesn't put any POs on.
Yes, I understand that the same office is putting those on them. As, I mean, you can do anything, but I'm just going to say this one we did.
And I can give you an email, because I actually emailed them asking them for my, for Rivera to sign those on the fire departments, and they say it is correct, it is very much okay to do.
Yeah, I just, I just still think it's getting off the close, you're taking all the eyes off of segregation, I guess.
Did we make the mention?
No, I didn't. On favor. Oasis has an independent contractor agreement with the Department of County Commissioners on behalf of Alba County的土地.
There's three copies of that.
Um, I think I've discussed this with Garrett, but I haven't discussed it with Nate and Michael. Oasis is two gentlemen out of task have created their own business. They specialize in commercial real estate appraisal, whereas Jerry Wisdom does our oil and gas. He's, I've asked him to look at just 200 commercial properties. The data input into the state CAMA, which is computer assisted mass appraisal, computers, the computer software provided by the state. I still don't feel like the commercial values, when I input as much data as I possibly can, has given me a value that I am comfortable with. I have a downtown building that I had CLGT look at and they're like, yep, $145,000. I'm like, no, it's a 25 foot by 120 foot, 120 year old downtown built. Well, it's not 140, I think it was built in 1920 was the year I had on it. And I just didn't like the value on it. So, I'd really like a set of professional appraisers to come in and really help me with the data input side. We've done this before where we've had people come in and check our collection data so far as the year built and the materials built with. But I've not really had any assistance with having a professional appraiser come in on the data collection side. These gentlemen have worked in Potawatomi County, have been employees there. So, they are very familiar with the system. And then they have also worked with tasks. So, they have worked statewide on commercial data collection and data entry for commercial real estate properties. I've only asked them to look at 200. $30 a parcel is really pretty standard for the, the work that they would be doing. So, the maximum amount of this contract would be 6,500. And they have also agreed to take Seth out with them and try to bring him along and train him to do some of the stuff too. And you'll see Brian has looked over this contract. It's already signed as well. So far as county's liability and stuff like that.
There's a paper moved out of all three of those. Okay, um, 14, uh, Harper reporting for 2023.
I've attached 2022, no, 2223s and 2324s because, you know, that affects the two, this calendar year for 23. And then I circled the amount that's left over in both of those accounts. And this is what we spent in 23. And then I'll get on the computer and put those in if you guys agree with that. But that's what I need to report.
All right.
Jennifer, you want to hold any five seconds?
No, I'll give you two of these. I only sign one.
Do what?
No, I'm just going to give them to you so you can send them to them. And then they'll have two originals and I'll keep one in here just in case.
For some reason, they don't do them back.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Transfer from OSU M O to OSU travel. On favor.
Michael, Nate, I'm sorry. Michael, Nate.
Paper plus certification from paperless program for District Two.
Just email it. And I don't want that to go in the volume. I don't want it to come to.
I'll make a motion to take the question. On favor. Full time hire for District One Taylor.
This one? Yeah, I told you, totally straight. This is a. I told him to call if anybody found out. We ran down the highway. Stop by and see this trade.
I saw it pulled off one advertising paper for that.
The what?
I saw it pulled off one advertising paper for that.
Yeah, she said she hasn't advertised yet, so.
Oh, well, we better hold up then.
Well, I mean, they've advertised before and not ever gotten very many or any qualified orders. But she has not advertised this time, as she was told. Apparently one of you. Not from you guys.
Well, has any virgin or any of us cross train? Nope, every time right up. Taylor's too busy and everything.
They are down to one dispatcher and one tailor at night. And that's what they were doing. And then there was this cross training on the rest of them. I know Cody is cross trained and that's only one I know of that is cross trained.
You know, that was kind of the stipulation. Ray was just that they was going to cross train. And they took the rays really fast and the cross train was very slow.
Probably they didn't cross train.
Yeah, I agree. I was trying to be nice. Sorry.
So, I'm going to suggest to her advertise it then.
I don't even know if he did.
She is, she has just stated she needs someone now. But, you know, if they, if they advertise for two weeks, she has people that are needing to take vacations and she's short. So, you guys, I mean, I guess you can just, we can just, you can just go down and talk to her then.
Yeah.
Somebody can go down and talk to her.
Advertise for it or something.
What about this 911? Or I guess it's weird.
They have their first meeting tonight. Do you want to take this with you tonight?
Plenty of people to fill it.
What's that?
Plenty of people sit on it.
Yeah, did you figure out who's?
I haven't. Nobody say yay or nay. Anybody can handle this.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make that spot, however, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
So, there's no action on it?
Yeah.
Say the motion on it, no action?
Oh, wait. On favor. Uh, hang up, see business.
Do you need anything by him?